Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn. Oh, okay. That's seven to zero.
All right, Alderman Wynn will be here shortly, and Alderman Holmes has just had surgery.
We have a quorum.
But we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. And I have a proclamation. Oceanique celebrating its 25th anniversary.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the proprietors from Oceanique are on their way.
They are here.
Oh, these are right here? Great.
Are we waiting for anyone else? Mark, are you it, or should we wait?
I'm here.
You're it? All right.
Good afternoon.
We're ready to go.
Good evening.
Whereas Oceanique is an eclectic seafood restaurant with an emphasis on French-American style cuisine, and whereas Mark Gross worked under the tutelage of renowned chef Jean Boucher of the world-famous La Francaise in Wheeling, Illinois, and furthered his skills in France and Hong Kong before serving as head chef and culinary impresario at a variety of restaurants and private clubs in Illinois and Michigan; and whereas Mark and his wife Renee Andre opened Oceanique on February 5, 1989, at 505 Main Street, Evanston, Illinois; and whereas Oceanique provides high-quality offerings in the restaurant made with the finest wine, organic produce, and seafood from sustainable, eco-friendly resources; and whereas Oceanique has won Wine Spectre Magazine's coveted Best Award of Excellence every year since 1994, being recognized as having one of the 750 Best Wine Lists in the world; and whereas Oceanique is committed to sustainable and eco-friendly food practices as it is a proud John G. Shed Right Bite partner; and whereas Oceanique celebrated its 25th anniversary on January 16, 2014, with a wine dinner in association with John G. Shed Aquarium's Right Bite Sustainable Seafood Program, and will continue to celebrate its 25th anniversary with a series of events throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim February 10, 2014, as Oceanique Day in the City of Evanston in celebration of its 25th anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's quite humbling and mind-boggling at the same time. Twenty-five years is a... I never had a job longer than two or three years before this. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Do I get a key, too? Just want to thank everybody on the council and the city. The city's been great to us. And, you know, I landed here by kind of accident. Found a ad in the paper. And it's good to be good, but it's good to be lucky, too. Thank you so much for 25 years. Thank you.
That concludes my announcements and proclamations. City manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, I'd like to ask Suzette Robinson, our Public Works Director, to come up. We've got word today about an exciting grant which we'd like to share with the council and the committee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager. I am happy to inform you that the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District has agreed to fund the Civic Center parking lot rehabilitation project. So we are working on the intergovernmental agreement as well as finishing the design. And we hope to have the new parking lot constructed by the fall. It will be a green parking lot. And what that means, there's a lot of green infrastructure elements from permeable paving in all the parking stalls, permeable sidewalks, as well as bioswells and rain gardens. And we will also have educational placards that talks about the different plant species in a variety of areas as well as a part of the project. So the project cost total is about $870,000. And we have asked for, and been... We don't have the agreement yet, but have been approved for $756,000 from MWRD, so.
And Madam Mayor, I think there's a little bit of a rest to the story here. We received some outreach, what, about four or five months ago, from the Water Reclamation District that they had some grant money that other jurisdictions were unable to use, unable to fulfill the commitments to perform on those grants, and called and said, "Is there anything the City of Evanston has on the shelf, ready to go?" This was a project that we had pretty much on the shelf, ready to go. And in a very short time, we were able to get that information to the district so that they could include that in their deliberation. So I want to thank Suzette and members of her team for moving very quickly on this. And I think there was an opportunity that would present itself, and we were able to quickly take advantage of that opportunity now to a tune of about $750,000. So Suzette, thank you, and your members, your staff, thank you.
Suzette, thank you. And I'd like to publicly thank Deborah Shore, one of the world's greatest water reclamation district commissioners.
And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have announcement. There's an election coming up on March 18. And the City Clerk's office will be open this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:45, if anybody would like to register to vote. And also this year, anybody who is 17 years old, who will be 18 by Election Day, can register to vote as well. Your last day to register to vote in the City Clerk's office is the 18th of February. But if you want to still register, you can register at Skokie Courthouse. But in time you register, you also must have to vote for the same time. So keep that in mind. You can have grace period from the 19th through 15th of March. But when you go to Skokie Courthouse, you have to vote and also register. If you come to our office, and we'll be open from now until the last day, which is the 18th, you can also come and vote and come and register with us. Early voting will start March 3 through the 15th. And they'll be here in room 2200 in the Civic City from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 to 3:00 on Sundays. That's my announcement for today.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. We have 45 minutes set aside for citizen comment, which is very important to all of us. We also have an unusual number of speakers, 36 or 7 speakers tonight. So either I allocate a minute and 20 seconds to each person, or if some of you agree with the previous speaker, you could say so. And that would be sufficient. So if you do that, if some of you will do that, then others can have a little longer. It's the best I can do. I'm going to call up your names. And I'm going to call the first four. Please give your name and address. And keep it to a minute and 20 seconds unless some of you can agree as a group to work together with your time. Barack Echols, Nora Dietrich, Harold Bauer, and Sheri Winger are the first four speakers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, honorable council members. My name is Barack Echols. I'm an attorney with Kirkland &amp; Ellis Law Firm. And I'm pleased to be here tonight representing the Evanston Art Center, who we represent on a pro bono basis. I'm here to briefly recap where the situation and where the Evanston Art Center stands with respect to the lease discussions. And I know you've got a number of pieces of paper in your packet. And there have been a lot of discussions. And the Art Center and its supporters thought it would be useful if I could lay out where we currently stand and what the request is, if we could. The goal of the Art Center was to remain at Harley-Clark for as long as possible, as we indicated in prior meetings. We did recently receive the Illinois First Fund Report, which indicated that long-term would not be an option. And it recommended that there be approximately $400,000 worth of repairs, improvements within the first year, and nearly $4 million of improvements within three years. And obviously, for an organization of our type, that's going to be beyond our means. So we asked the Human Services Committee last Monday whether we might be granted two years' time additional to remain in the facility. And we also, recognizing that it's important to the city that this property not be solely a revenue drain and that funds be coming in, had our executive committee pull together quickly and advise that we'd be willing to put in $110,000 towards the improvements of the Harley-Clark Mansion that were identified in the Illinois First Fund Report. And these are the largest bucket of the health, safety, and accessibility section of the report. And so we're talking about fire alarms, fixing the fire escapes and fire doors in the lot.
I'm going to need you to wrap up unless you can get somebody else who's part of the group to cede some time to you.
I believe...
They will.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe they've got... They'll cede some time. But I will be brief, Madam Mayor. Although we communicated this offer to the Health Services, Human Services Committee, we weren't able to discuss it. And I realize it was presented late in the process, and that might have been part of the reason we weren't able to have a full discussion of it at that point. And the vote of the Human Services Committee was to trigger the eight-month lease eviction or termination provision, which would mean that we would have to be out of the facility by October. We appreciate this opportunity tonight to have this option on the table so that you all are aware that we are willing to put this money forward in order to stay in Harley-Clark for two years. You would be disappointed if that couldn't be, please, considered. Because we understand that there have been these preliminary discussions with the IDNR. But we haven't been aware of any specifics with respect to timing or amount of rent or anything that would seem to preclude us from being able to stay in the facility for the two additional years. There also has been a reshuffling of leadership, I understand, just late last week at IDNR. I have no idea if that's going to affect their plans with respect to Harley-Clark. But again, we will stand by and are prepared to offer the $110,000 to remain for two years. If for some reason that is not feasible, given the circumstances, we would ask alternatively that the city allow us to remain in the property through the end of January 2015. That timing is important because a facility like ours just lives and dies by the grace of its donors and its students. And if we can have until the end of January 2015, that will allow us to get through the fall term of our classes. It also gets us through the period of the annual appeal and our capital campaign. And if we have uncertainty about whether we can get through those items, all of those will suffer, and it will be a difficult situation that the Art Center will be put in. I do want to say that we greatly appreciate the partnership that the Art Center and the city have had over all these years. We look forward to continuing to be a vital part of the community here and to serving the citizens of Evanston. And once again, thank you for your time. And we look forward to working with you more as we move ahead.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council Clerk and Manager, thank you very much for your time this evening. Nora Dietrich, the Executive Director of the Evanston Art Center. I live at 829 Forest Avenue. I'd also like to thank our staff, students, faculty, program partners, trustees, and all our generous donors for their continued support throughout all of this and including during the next couple of years while the Art Center transitions to another site. To follow up on Mr. Echols' statement, the Art Center does request two additional years on the lease in order to provide it more time to identify, secure, and renovate its next facility, a process many other comparable art centers have taken nearly eight years to complete. In addition to the classes and fundraising activities that Mr. Echols pointed out, I would also like to highlight the fact that we will also run our craft expo. This allows artists valuable income and fundraising income for the Art Center. It also allows us the time to celebrate our 85th anniversary, which falls in the middle of October 2014. No matter what you decide this evening, this Art Center, founded by Evanston's leading civic and cultural leaders in 1929, is committed to continuing to serve Evanston and the greater arts community. We have exceptional arts programming in the works and on the drawing board, programs unlike any other offered in Evanston. And we will offer it from another location, whether it's transitional or satellite-based, until we can find a new home, a home that would be ideal for a 21st-century Center for Contemporary Arts and Design. That's what we're working towards.
Nora, I need you to wrap up.
Yes. And we hope that you'll be able to count on... And we hope we'll be able to count on your support. I just wanted to mention one last thing. We sent out an online petition. We received over 2,500 comments and signers. Over 698 of them came from Evanston. And I hope some of our supporters tonight will agree to read some of the comments. They're only a line long. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you.
Members of the City Council, Madam Mayor, good evening. I'm Harold Bauer, 1215 Greenwood Street in Evanston. I'd like to revisit briefly some of the basic sentiments that I expressed at the Human Resources Committee meeting last month. We are leaving the Harley-Clark Mansion. We all know that. But the number of days that we are allowed to still remain there, to conclude our presence there, is huge in its significance with regard to the Art Center's future. I so regret that there isn't an opportunity to engage in discussion with members of the City Council and the City Manager. Because the situation, the soundbites that you hear don't allow us to really explore the issue at hand. I don't believe for a moment that any of you wish the Evanston Art Center harm. You surely know by now what a vital asset EAC is for this fine city. Nor do we have anything against the IDNR. We wish them well at 2603 Sheridan. And I believe, I heard it said by IDNR, that they wish no hardship on the Art Center. If the question then is one of timing for their funding, surely there are ways to negotiate that issue. Let them own the building whenever that needs to be. But surely the actual occupancy is negotiable. If it's a state issue, let's talk to the governor's office. If it's a federal issue, I'll call the president or the secretary of whatever agency is involved. I'm sure that our skilled city manager can find a way to work this out. We want to preserve a good working relationship with you, with your eventual successors. I'm confident that we will continue to need your support as you have helped us in the past. But please know that those extra days is critical for the Art Center's ability to continue our service to the thousands of citizens who covet that service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Sheri Winger. I live at 2608 Orington. And I'm just going to give you a flavor of some of the more than 2,500 comments or signatures and comments we had. The petition, pretty cool. It'll take a second. This one is from, I believe, an Evanstonian. "The service that the EAC provides to the community should be a priority for a city that prides itself on diversity, creativity, and cultural experiences." Thank you.
Thank you. You're the first speaker to stay within the limit. Thank you, Sheri. The next are Bonnie Wilson, Karen Kivon, 2831 Sheridan, Renee Schleicher, and Barbara Goldsmith.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Wilson. I'm the Evanston Township Assessor. I'm not speaking here on EAC, although I do support them. But I think it's important that I speak tonight to talk to the taxpayers of Evanston about our office and what is going on. Right now, we are accepting the senior freeze and senior exemption applications. The deadline was supposed to be February 5, but that has been extended. I do not have an exact date. But please call the office if you do need a senior exemption or a senior freeze application. Tomorrow, the Cook County Commissioner, Larry Sefardin's office, and the Cook County Assessor's office will be at the Levy Center, helping seniors with their exemptions during the lunch hour from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. I would like to encourage seniors to make an appointment to come to the assessor's office for their senior applications. I want to remind all seniors over 65 can apply for senior exemptions. And anybody over 65, 65 or over, gets a senior exemption. So it's important that they understand that. But if you're over 65 and you want to apply for a senior freeze, your household income needs to be less than $55,000. People get very confused on that point. I just also want to remind everyone that we are now at the Civic Center, next to the City Clerk's office. Our new phone number is 847-448-8136. That's 847-448-8136. I also know that everyone has gotten their tax bills. And property tax bills are paid in two installments. The first installment bill is 55% of the total property tax bill for the previous year and will be due on March 4. You should be reminded that taxpayers should note that the first installment tax bill will not reflect homeowners, seniors, or other exemptions, nor will they reflect successful assessment appeals that were filed for tax year 2013. The first installment is just an estimate based on what was paid last year. When the second installment bill is mailed in the summer, it will reflect all exemptions for which the property is eligible, as well as any savings due to the successful 2013 tax appeals. If money for property taxes is paid into an escrow account, please do not pay the tax bills. I advise you that the property tax escrows held by the mortgage companies will pay those tax bills, and don't pay property tax bills on them. If they do, an overpayment of property taxes may result. And property owners who do not have a mortgage company paying their taxes can make tax payments in person, by mail, or in line at the Cook County Treasurer's website, or go to any Chase Bank in Evanston to pay their bills. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Karen Ribbin. I live at 2831 Sheridan Place. And I'm here on behalf of the Evanston Art Center and would like to read to you one of the comments from an individual who signed our petition. "This is important to me because we live one-half block from the Art Center. We want to keep our neighborhood and community thriving with all that the Evanston Art Center has brought." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name is Renee Schleicher. I live at 2026 Hawthorne in Evanston. And I am here on behalf of the Art Center also to present another comment from one of the more than 2,500 signators and commentators on the petition. And while I am reading someone else's comments, I firmly believe them myself. "The Evanston Art Center provides the highest-quality arts education and exhibition programs on the North Shore. This institution is essential to the quality of life in our city and our entire area." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Goldsmith. I live at 6340 Capulina, Morton Grove, Illinois. I'm on the faculty of the Evanston Art Center, and I've also been a long-term Noyes tenant. I would like to read something that was written in the petition also. "It is vital to have an art center in Evanston. Securing and moving to new facilities will take time. And a two-year period will allow the Evanston Art Center to continue to offer classes and exhibitions uninterrupted during the interim period." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Sue Summers, 1600 Ashland, Anita Ivy Miller, Jim McCollum, Lisa Harris.
Hi, Madam Mayor and all of you. My name is Sue Summers. I live at 1600 Ashland. I'm on the faculty at the Evanston Art Center and also a student there. And I wish to read to you from the petition. "Please allow the Evanston Art Center to survive. Evanston gets its identity and character from institutions like these." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Anita Ivy Miller. I live at 3029 Central in Wellmett. But I grew up in Evanston. And the comment I want to make is that Evanston Art Center provided such a positive influence for me. I attended it as a child, and I have gone on to... It inspired me to be, have a lifelong career and commitment to art, so to the extent that I have taken classes there as an adult and participated in many activities there. Please allow Evanston Art Center the time to regroup the two-year period that they so desperately deserve and need.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Jim McCollum. I live at 2550 Cowper Avenue. I am a senior citizen, as you can tell. And nearly all of the people who are in the class that I take right now in Pastel are senior citizens. And we're all deeply appreciative of the Evanston Art Center being here. It's added a dimension to our lives. As I mentioned, the first time we had a meeting here, a couple of months ago or back, whatever, it's been very important to me and it's very important to most of the people, as you're going to hear tonight. And I want to also read a statement that was found on the petition. And that is that the Evanston Art Center is unquestionably an important addition to the community. And they should be able to choose and transition to a new home as smoothly as possible, not be pushed out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Harris. I live at 6433 North Maplewood in Chicago. I'm on faculty at the Art Center and also a student there, too. I'm going to read a comment from the petition, too. "I completely agree with this petition. The alternate plan ignores the cultural asset the Art Center is and how much it gave and gives back to the city. How many people have used the Art Center over the years? How much these people brought to Evanston as revenue to local businesses and indirectly to the city? This, of course, apart from the cultural services delivered by the Art Center to adults as well as kids. It is sad to see that such a special asset needs to struggle so hard to survive in a rich and diverse city as Evanston." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tanya Noble, Blair Layden, Antoinette Hook, and Dominique Sansom.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tanya Noble, 596 Sheridan Square. I just want to start by saying that I'm a member of this community. I live in Evanston, also work here. I have attended many art classes at the Art Center and really find it to be a very valuable commodity here. commodity here. But I think one of the things I'm most proud of is that the council and those that are given the task of making decisions for this community always do it with very methodical, thoughtful, intentional, and responsible decision-making. And it's truly a reflection of the values of this community. I'm reading a statement that was found on the website. Forcing the Art Center to move before they found a suitable place to relocate will wreak havoc with their programming, leave the artists who teach there without a need and source of income, and potentially leave working parents without a high-quality summer camp option for their children that they depend on. Please don't invoke the early exit clause. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Antoinette Hauck. I live at 2900 Lincoln Street in Evanston. And I've been at the Art Center studying ceramics and discovering a side of me that I didn't know I had, an artistic side of me that I didn't know I had, and enjoyed it very much. Today, I'm reading another one of these emails. The Evanston Art Center has been a life-giving hub of the Evanston art scene for 80 years now. Thousands of people have been introduced to art-making through its classes, exhibitions, and events. It is a cornerstone of Evanston's cultural life. Please don't prune the tree by chopping it off at the trunk.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dominic Sansoni. I live at 40W 980 Kings Mill Road. I actually have the privilege of reading my own quote from the online petition this evening. The EAC provides unparalleled programming for the greater Chicagoland area. Forcing them to close would be a tremendous blow to the arts and culture of this community. I believe in their mission so deeply, I commute almost 60 miles one way twice per week to be involved as an instructor, as I commuted this evening. Don't let this resource go quietly into the night.
Thank you.
My name is Blair Layden, and I live at 1864 Sherman Avenue. Good evening. I don't know the protocol, but-
Good evening is fine.
-and everyone. Okay, when I moved here to Evanston from New York City 28 years ago, the Evanston Art Center was a sheer wonderful discovery, and it sustained me throughout many of my life changes, both adversely and positively. I mean, I meant that in my life changes, not the Art Center adversely. Okay, now, we are supposedly an intelligent, progressive community. That's why I chose Evanston. We talk very big on education. We even have Northwestern University here. Well, the arts are the basis and the essence of all learning, not just drawing, painting, sculpture, music. It's the basis of all learning. It's time we put that into action and not just taught. The children's programs, as well as the adults and for the seniors, inspire our artists of the future. And this includes socially, racially, health-wise. There are many health benefits from the arts. Also, it includes not just artists, as we narrowly think of them, but our scientists, our mathematicians-
I do need you to wrap up soon.
All right.
Thank you.
And even our corporate heads and our politicians. They might make them think a little bit outside the box. They all learn critical thinking, creativity. So where are our sponsors? Where are our citizens, our wealthy citizens, our corporations, or even the university? Are the grants, where are they? They've got to be found. It's essential.
Thank you. Next is Matt Runfola, Kathy, sorry, I'm having troubles, Rose Pedro, lives on Payne, Ann Hines, and Andrew Breen.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Runfola, and I reside at 1201 West Chase in Chicago, just south of the border. Before I read another statement from the website, from the signed petition, I just wanted to mention that I've been a faculty member at the Evanston Art Center since 2001, and it's served me, as well as the community, from my own eyes greatly. And I don't think it's, there's any question of that. I think, I think everyone understands that it's a great asset to the community. I think what I would like to reiterate is that if we can just open up the dialogue amongst yourselves, amongst, between yourselves and the IDNR, if there's any chance for, to arrange a delay in the plans, that's, that's really what we're asking for. Thank you. I would just like to read the statement. Evanston artists and those of us who cherish their work know that making new keeps us open to divergent ways of thinking. Art is good for Evanston. It makes us happy, and it makes us smart. Let the EAC have the time it needs to make the move with the least possible disruption. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Risbenda from 2101 Payne Street. I am a student of the Art Center, as my children have also been, and I'm going to read a statement from the online petition. The Art Center is crucial to the cultural integrity of Evanston. My family has participated in various classes and exhibits. Evanston is a special place to live, and the Art Center is one of the institutions that have made it so. We are not a bedroom community. We are a city that thrives because it has universities, theaters, and the visual arts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm Ann Hines, 525 Judson Avenue in Evanston. What I'm going to read is not my words, but they are certainly reflective of my involvement and my daughter's involvement in the arts programs. The ceramics program at Evanston Art Center changed my life 25 years ago, giving me much more than I can begin to describe here. The quality of the instruction and the clay community stay with me to this day. I have had the pleasure of teaching there in the last few years, and have again been grateful to have a connection to this wonderful place. It will be very sad to lose such a treasure through decisions that would require us to end our program prematurely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Andrew Breen. I'm at 1704 West Estes in Chicago. I teach digital photography to kids at the Evanston Art Center, and I'd like to read a statement. This is from the petition. The Evanston Art Center has been part of my life since 1974. It is an invaluable resource artistically, culturally, and socially. The city should do everything possible to help and support it.
Thank you very much. Next is Bob Fields, Rachel Dosse, Diana Cast, and Kevin Foy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bob Fields. I live at 1528 West John Colteris in Chicago. I'm a former resident of Evanston, and I'm a member, a member of the Art Center as well as a student. I'd like you to imagine what it was like this morning or this afternoon when you got yourself dressed. You looked at the mirror when you walked out, before you walked out the door to check yourself out, didn't you? Well, imagine the mirror in front of you right now at this moment. What are you wearing? Was it, how was it created? It was created by designers and artists. And why did you pick it out? Because it's special. So you have wonderful dresses, beautiful shawls, a very nice wrap over your shoulders. I would call it a talus otherwise. And look at your shoes. So I just imagine when you go home tonight, all your beautiful things in your closets and your drawers, and imagine them saying, "Two more years, two more years, two more years." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rachel Dosse. I live in Glenview at 1807 Wagner Road. I do think Evanston is a terrific city, and I'm going to read a comment in favor of the Evanston Art Center, where I've taken classes for 30 years. This comment is, "I take classes and enjoy going to their shows, excellent facility and teachers." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kevin Foy. I've been, I'm at 329 Spruce Street in Glenview. I've been faculty, staff, and student at the Art Center. I'd like to read a quote. "The AAC has offered an incomparable resource to the community. Time is needed to transition to the proper space." Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Wickham, Joe Moose, Kevin Johnson, and Emily McCormick.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Diana Cast, and I'm a longtime resident of Rogers Park. I currently live at 445 East Ohio Street. My comment from the online petition is that my kids take classes here during the school year, and more importantly, they are attending camp. Nothing else like it around for camp.
Thank you.
Council, my name is Joe Moose. I recently moved to Evanston, to 1136 Sherman, from a neighboring community. One of the reasons I came to Evanston was the Evanston Art Center. I've been taking classes there for about 20 years, on and off. I'm going to read a quote. "The city of Evanston's plans to be an arts hub on the North Shore would certainly lose their credibility if it forces the Art Center to move on such short formal notice. The Center is a force for creativity, not just among its thousands of students, but among those who enjoy its gallery showings, its outdoor sculpture displays, and its support of art in our schools, and much, much more. Please consider extending the lease." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Wickham, and I live at 6825 North Kildare Avenue in Lincolnwood, Illinois. And I'd like to read a comment from the internet. At the very least you can do is let them stand until they find a new home. Two years is what they are asking for. Evanston Art Center has been a mainstay of this community and has provided artistic classes serving thousands of people over the years. Don't let them down. And I agree with everything that's been said before. I've been a member since 1995, and have taken classes. And as an elementary art school teacher, everything that I have learned there and experienced there, and the people I've met there, has made me a better school teacher. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, good evening. My name is Emily McCormick. I live at 2312 West Lunt in Chicago. And I have been taking classes myself for about six years at the Evanston Art Center, and I signed the petition and asked for the extra time that the Art Center needs to make a less stressful transition. The following statement was also, I'm reading a statement from the petition. "The Art Center makes a unique and important contribution to Evanston and the North Shore. Please don't be reckless in dealing with it." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Johnson. My name's Kevin Johnson. I'm with Evanston Township Organization, and also the Heart and Alliance and the Art Center, and the CARE. Basically, all the programs that have been threatened this year, has gone through a tough time. My hearts and condolences go out to everyone that is struggling this year as far as all these organizations, especially Evanston Township Organization. So everyone is wondering that, what is Evanston Township Organization, you know? Here's an organization that's been here in Evanston for almost 60 years beyond, and it's been, it's been in Evanston for a while, you know? And there's a lot of changes coming down this year. It's very tough, obviously, those of you don't know. So let's talk about what this organization does. This organization does is basically is, it's a merge, what it, what it does to the community of Evanston is provides like, for example, an emergency assistant. Basically, what it is, is if you get fired from your job, if your house gets burned down, you know, and, you know, anything can happen. For example, like this lady who's one of our clients, is she got laid off from her job in one of the greatest markets that we all called-
Kevin, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, yeah, Dominix. And so she got laid off from her job and stuff like that, and she finds out that great organizations like Evanston Township exists in Evanston. So what happened is that she was trying to apply for unemployment, and then what happened is that the lady, she had a hard time filling out the paperwork. So she was, you know, she was getting ready to be kicked out. She getting ready to be kicked out of her home. She was a little bit worried as far as, because unemployment did not come through for her because she messed up the paperwork. Thank God we have organizations that can save people like Evanston Township Organizations, you know? And it's real rough for this year because we own a ballot this year, and in order to save this organization is everybody has to come out and vote March the 18th. And it is the reason why they have to vote, because the program is going to be closed, or some people need to be able to come out and vote and to decide, to be able to say, you know what, we need this program in Evanston, let's save it. And I'm pretty sure some of you people want to do that, you know?
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm wrapping it up. So basically is, let's talk about this a little bit organization. So this organization, like I was talking about, has been here for 60 years, and also that it funds almost 22 other aging organizations. So, you know, this, this, this company, I mean, organization created more jobs than we ever seen in Evanston, because think about it.
Kevin, you really do have to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up, Mayor. I'm, I'm, I'm going to knock it out. For example, like I say, you know, I mean, it's been here for all these years, and it created more jobs, like 22 organizations, and now we want to get rid of it? You know, it created more jobs than we ever seen in our entire life. So basically, now are we saying that we don't need this program? We don't need this organization? Let's just kick it to the curb? The big question is, what, what's going to happen to the people, you know?
Kevin, Kevin.
And then, and then you got to turn around, you got to turn around the staff. Where are they going to go when this organization goes, you know? Then here's the staff.
Kevin, Kevin, you've had more than time than any other speaker.
I'm wrapping it up, I'm wrapping it up. So here's the staff, you know, and then the staff volunteered the soup kitchen for a city of Evanston. So, you know, as, as we all care, you know? But here it is, the staff that, when they volunteer the soup kitchen every-
Kevin, you're at four and a half minutes now. I need you done.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up, you know? I'm trying to be able to explain to them why, why, why we need this organization.
I think you've done a good job.
I'm trying to be able to, you know-
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, if you allow him to go on, I'm going to insist that everybody out here be allowed to go on.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, Kevin.
All right.
Hi. I agree. Patrick Carr, Carol Carson, somebody Russell, I apologize, I can't read the first name, and Jennifer, Jennifer Pakman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm here on behalf of the Evanston Art Center. I live at 9323 Springfield Avenue in Evanston. I'm reading a quote from the petition online. "It is extremely important that the Evanston Art Center not have to contend with unnecessary obstacles. It is a treasure, part of what makes Evanston great. It has added immeasurably to the lives of many people in the past year. We should do whatever we can to keep it running smoothly." And in my own words, I'd just like to say, "It would be a great loss to the city if the Art Center was forced to vacate the Harley Clark Mansion before a new location was prepared to open." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Carlson. I live at the same address, 9323 Springfield Avenue, Evanston. I'd just like to say a personal note. As a longtime resident of Evanston, I've been involved with the Evanston Art Center for many years, as a student, contributing artists, and volunteer. The Evanston Art Center continues to be a vital part of the Evanston community. It has developed many artists and has added cultural vitality to thousands of diverse people of all ages, adding incomparable richness to our community and beyond. This fine organization with its devoted teachers- and beyond. This fine organization with its devoted teachers, staff, and volunteers deserves at least the two-year window to remain in its present location while it looks for a place to expand its programs while continuing to serve our community. Please allow the original lease to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Evie Russell. I live at 1724 Livingston Street in Evanston. In October, Evanston Art Center will be as old as the pine trees that were in our backyard when we lost them forever in the 2011 parade show. A tree felled is a tree lost forever. You cannot replace old growth. The art center is alive as a tree. It grows, provides shelter for the soul, and offers beauty and food for thought and creativity. If you cut it off from your Evanston landscape, it will be gone forever and will not be replaced in your or your citizens' lifetime. Allow EAC the time in the mansion so it can send out new roots in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pakman. I live at 2744 Crawford Avenue in Evanston. I came to talk because -- sorry. I'm not sure you realize that, really, you can't find these art center classes anywhere else. They're expensive. I've looked. You cannot find them anywhere else. It's the only place to get them. And, sorry, I'm very nervous. That's unexpected. But I'm sorry, I really don't think that they're probably going to be able to pull all the classes together in that two-year period or whatever. I just don't think it's going to happen. I really don't believe that all the classes will be able to be offered if you don't give them a little bit more time. You might not think it makes a big difference, but my daughter's in high school, and she and all her friends, I mean, sorry, I'm very emotional about this. They're trying to pull together portfolios, you know, so they can go to college, and they want art majors. And if the classes are disrupted, I don't think it's going to happen. It's going to be really hard. So you really are messing with people's lives. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Robert Fields, Junad Rizki, Jack Darren, and Greg Pasternak. Thank you.
Going to speak to something a little different. Environmental testing, Junad Rizki, environmental testing at James Park, item A31, looks to me like another misrepresentation by public officials and city staff, like what happened with the closed-door meetings at Harley Clark. And now the crisis the art center faces, just the consequences of some of this. Environmental testing because his kids are sledding on the hill at James Park is a lot of nonsense, as was explained by the city attorney. He really isn't qualified. He really does dis- testing, in my opinion, as an attorney, especially environmental. You are testing for methane gas, which is a toxin and an explosion hazard. The proposal also is a cover-up. This proposal says nothing. It's not even a proposal. It's a joke. This is pretty outrageous, because we don't know what's going on. Let's cut the nonsense here and give the public the truth about what environmental hazards are at James Park. When Harley Clark was discussed, a public official up here made all kinds of ridiculous statements about environmental hazards in the building. There isn't an environmental hazard there because it was a dump. But why is the city testing? The city is not telling anyone this. And that is a cover-up. This council is starting to have a toxic and hazardous odor, like a landfill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Jack Darren. I live at 525 Sherman Avenue. I just wanted to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation to pursue bringing the IDNR to the Harley Clark Mansion. I think especially with what we've learned about what the building needs in terms of renovations and repairs, and the debate that we went through last year about potential privatized uses on the lakefront, I think we're extremely lucky to have the department show up with not only a mission that's very much about our lakefront, celebrating it and protecting it, but also with the resources to make the repairs that the building needs. I agree that the art center is an incredibly important asset for our community, so I hope that a timetable can be worked out for them that allows us to take advantage of the opportunity that the DNR offers to our community and our lakefront. Very quickly, on another agenda item, on A3.2, the electric supply for city buildings tonight. Very excited to see and applaud the work of the committee that designed that bid to give the city the chance to go coal-free, empowering its buildings. So in addition to realizing savings, to take a big step forward for our climate action plan, and to power all the city's facilities with 100% clean energy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Greg Pasternak. I live at 542 Michigan Avenue. My comments this evening will be in reference to agenda item A7, which is a proposed revision to Title IX of the Evanston City Noise Code. We've been having a problem with a neighbor who lives across the street. He has set up a record player with speakers on his front porch, and during the warmer months, he plays music every single day, on and off, throughout the day, for hours. Often, he's not even there. He leaves his porch and goes inside. During the time when he's not playing a record, he often plays a saxophone or clarinet on the front porch. We can hear both the recorded and live music clearly in our condo, even with the windows closed. With the windows open, the music is as loud as if we were playing it in our own living room. My wife and I work from home, and our office is in the front room, which directly faces his house. Her work requires listening to, editing, and writing music, and she's unable to concentrate while his music is playing. Even if she wears headphones, they don't block out the sound of his music. I talked to the neighbor and was not able to work out a solution or compromise, so we got the Evanston police involved. Unfortunately, because of the hours listed in the code, they interpreted the noise code to read that our neighbor was allowed to do whatever he chose on his property between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, including violating the stated restriction of, quote, "disturbing the peace, quiet, and comfort of the neighboring inhabitants." The police officers told both him and us that all we could do was ask him to turn down the music. Since he plays the music on and off throughout the day, walking over each time to ask him to turn it down is not really feasible. The last time I spoke to him about this, he told me to shut my damn windows. Not that it really matters, but it was in the 40s outside, and my windows were closed. Because of the aggressiveness of this response, I don't think it's a good idea for me to confront him directly in the future. I'd like to be able to ask the police to enforce the code. We're happy with the current wording of the revised code, because what constitutes a violation is now very clear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rizki, did you want to speak on a non-agenda topic?
I'll speak on transparency again. Mr. Bob Kowits continues to, when contracts are approved here and things, there's a clause in these contracts or these approvals, that Mr. Bob Kowits can negotiate the contract after the approval. So what is the council doing? Again, the council's approving things, and then you're basically allowing him to renegotiate it? Doesn't make any sense to me. And as far as the Harley Clark, whatever happens tonight, if it moves forward, I suggest that citizens be sitting in the room when he negotiates with the state agency, whether they're representatives from the art center, no Park Sale, or anybody else. We want the public there to know what's going on. There seems to be too many side deals going on here with a lot of things, and some of us are getting quite concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, unless there's anyone else, that that concludes public comment. Thank you all for coming. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, January 27. Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and requests your approval of the following expenditures. The payroll through January 26, $3,217,465.96. The bills through 2/11, $1,705,553.12. Bills through February 10, in the amount of $1,304,684.19. Credit card activity through December 31, $121,550.19. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to negotiate, execute a contract for environmental consulting services with CS Geologic LLC in an amount not to exceed $32,000. The next item, A3.2, the electrical supply agreement, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair, because we now have the vendor and the amount. A3.3, we ask your approval for the 2014 fuel purchases in the amount of $950,000 from Pelotine Oil Company. This is a suburban purchasing cooperative with the Northwest Municipal Conference bid winner for all grades and types of fuel that are utilized by city vehicles. This is in an amount of $950,000. We ask your approval to authorize the second contract renewal for tire repair and recapping services for 2014 in the amount of $25,008 with Wentworth Tire Services. Approval is requested for the purchase of coal patch material for cold weather street maintenance activities from Peter Baker &amp; Son in the not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. This is a joint purchase bid led by the municipal partnering initiative. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a renewal of the annual sole-source maintenance and support agreement for the term of February 21, 2014, through February 20, 2015, with Azteca Systems, Inc., for city works, order, and service request management software in the amount of $22,405. Approval is also requested for the manager to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of an emergency tone alerting system from Chicago Communications LLC in the amount of $219,815.48. Your approval is also requested for the manager to execute a change order with Schaefer Consulting for financial management and human resource payroll software system support in the amount of $55,000. Authorization for the city manager to execute change order number one is also requested with Boulder Contractors, less $9,000 for non-compliance penalty due to Boulder contracts violations City of Evanston's local employment program, and two, for the not-to-exceed amount of $60,592.43 for completing additional construction items for the project. This will increase the total contract amount from $2,648,200 to $2,717,792.43. We ask your approval for Resolution 8R14, which authorizes the manager to sign the agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the 2014 motor fuel tax street resurfacing program. Funding is provided by motor fuel tax amount in the amount of $1,400,000. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to sign the standard Illinois Department of Transportation Cost Participation Agreement for upgrading the traffic signals on the state highways within the city of Evanston. This is an agreement with them to, for us to pay part, and for them to pay the majority of the cost. Next is ordinance 101014. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You want that removed. That is the matter having to do with noise and amending all Title IX of the city code. Next, planning and development met this evening and request your approval for introduction of ordinance 24014, granting a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Just Turkey, at 2430 Main Street. Madam Mayor and Council, I'm also moving suspension of the rules for this matter, as requested by Alderman Braithwaite. Next is ordinance 25014. The zoning board of appeals and the committee recommend introduction of ordinance 25014, granting a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Asia Express, at 1009 Davis Street. Next, approval is requested for amending the zoning ordinance with regards to distance of air conditioning equipment from lot lines. We ask your approval also for ordinance 3014, which amends the zoning ordinance to establish a use category for business vocational schools with land use regulations as permitted uses in all commercial mixed-use and university districts, and special uses in all other zoning districts, and amending the existing definition of college/university institution to clarify the distinction between the two use categories. This ordinance now reflects business and vocational schools as not allowed, as permitted, or special uses in all residential zoning districts. As I mentioned, it's for action. The Human Services Committee met last week and recommends the city council approve the Township of Evanston bills, payrolls, and medical payments for the month of January 2014 in the amount of $79,980.63. The commission on, this is an ordinance 8013, which is more or less a housekeeping and follow-up ordinance, asking for action on a matter that was introduced on May 13. And this has to do with changes on the commission on aging. Next is H3 Harley Clark Mansion, and surprisingly, this is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Madam Mayor has no recommendations for boards or commissions, and therefore I move the consent agenda. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, and seeing no one wishes to discuss it. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Rainey, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works? Yes, Madam Mayor. A3.2 had to do with electricity rates for the city-owned buildings. We request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with MC Squared Energy Services from Chicago to provide electrical energy to 23 city-owned facilities for a fixed price of .0548 cents per kilowatt hour. This price includes the cost to provide green E-certified renewable energy credits from a wind power generator in Illinois or an adjoining state. I move approval. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the electricity supply agreement. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. The motion passes. One more. Madam Mayor, I've been requested to remove from the agenda ordinance 1014, which has to do with changes to the city code involving Title IX. So I'm going to do that, but I think there are members of the council who would like to speak to this. You're right, there are. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I would like to move to hold it. I think that there are a number of noise issues, as exemplified by one of the speakers tonight, that impact the community. And I'd like to take a closer look at this and make sure that we're not doing something that has unintended consequences, or perhaps not addressing all of the concerns that have come to light. Also, some business area concerns, and I think I'd like to take a closer look at that.
All right. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree that the noise changes in the ordinance are particularly, you know, questionable, and I'd like more information as well. But I'd also like to understand why we removed the ordinance prohibiting spitting in public. That, I would like to hear at least the Health Department's take on that. Quite honestly, it disgusts me, and--
I'd like to keep that one in there. Prohibition, keep the prohibition on spitting, yeah.
Yes. Well, I mean, seriously?
Yeah.
I mean, it's been slated for removal, so I just--
It's not nice.
Right, right. No, I'm agreeing with you, Mark. I think we should not change that existing--
All right, okay, we can talk about it. But I'd like more information from the Health Department.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Just a point of clarification, Alderman Wilson. You want to hold this at the city council level. You're not interested in sending it back to committee?
Correct, just hold it here.
Thank you for working on this.
Alderman Burrus?
Also, in regard to the noise, I would like to keep in that black parties can have music. I didn't like seeing in there that there was, they wouldn't be allowed. And I agree, we should not spit on the streets. we should not spit on the streets.
Thank you, Alderman Burrus.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no lights for further discussion unless someone has something more to say, this will be held at the council level.
Thank you.
Planning and Development, Alderman Wynn.
Oh, oh, no, no, no. We have to move approval of the...
Right, it's been...
Just Turkey.
Oh, right. So we voted on to suspend the rules, so what we need to vote on is action for tonight. So that's P1, Ordinance 24014 granting a special use for a type-two restaurant, Just Turkey, at 2430 Main Street.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes is not here, so who is on Human Services to discuss Harley-Clark? Alderman Braithwaite, it's H3.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move Harley-Clark Mansion update on future discussions with the Evanston Arts Center and Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for future use of the mansion, and this is for action. Are we...
Is there a second?
Are we looking to accept?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Interim Chair of Human Services. At the Human Services Committee last Monday, the committee approved invoking the lease term that provides for notice to the current tenant of 2603 Sheridan Road, namely the Arts Center, to vacate the premises by 240 days, which is eight months. And then we got a letter in our packet, and it occurred to me even before I read the letter that the termination date would fall right smack dab in the middle of the Arts Center's fall programming. And I think it's important that we, as some of the speakers have suggested tonight, that we at the very least allow the Arts Center to see it through the fall programming and all the plans that they've already made and not interrupt and/or disrupt ongoing programming. I think that was one of our goals along the way here, and so I'd be looking to extend the time to the end of January 2015 for notice to the Evanston Arts Center pursuant to the lease.
What's the date?
January 31, 2015, and which would give them the ability to run their fall programming in 2014, their summer camps in 2014, and we hope and expect to do what they've said they need to do on locating a new space.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would actually go further if it were up to me alone, to maybe 18 months. I think that, like I said, in Human Services Committee, the two years is a lot, probably too much, and certainly eight months is, as we now know, too little. But the notion of losing this interest from the IDNR, I think, is probably not realistic. My sense is they're drooling over this opportunity. It's a beautiful site, could not be more tailor-made to their proposed interests, and seriously, they have to, you know, if we do entertain their proposal, I think they're not going to walk away from it over a few months here or there. So I strongly urge us to even consider more than the end of January, possibly into the second quarter of next year. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I understood from the Human Services Committee that there was a reason for the timing being what it is. I support Alderman Grover's motion. I'm very hopeful that we can get through next January. Given the timetable that you described to us, does that seem like a reasonable amount of time? I know that's what Ms. Dietrich had requested, if I'm remembering correctly.
I'm sorry, which?
Through the end of January. So does the timetable, does the timetable with IDNR through January and all of the funding decisions that need to be made, is the end of January a reasonable time, do you think?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, I think for vacation of the property. I think, though, that I would hope that we would have an agreement with them prior to that, with the knowledge that there's a date certain that the building would be vacated. So if that's the willingness of the council to do that, I'll do everything in my power to make it all work.
Well, there may be an issue that what I'm about to say does not address the motion on the floor. However, I would like to know what is the legal process for the city to engage in negotiations with a potential tenant without doing another request for proposals? I don't know if DNR was one of the applicants previously, or, and I always thought that when we had a city property, there had to be a request for proposals or applications or something along that line, that we couldn't single out one party to the exclusion of others.
City Manager, do you want to respond?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey. If you recall, last fall, we were approached by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They submitted a letter to the city. I then brought that issue to the council's Human Services Committee and asked for direction. The Human Services Committee, its November meeting, indicated that I'd be directed to work with both IDNR and the Arts Center. That motion was then approved by the city council on November 11th. So I think Alderman Rainey is absolutely correct, that is a normal process. However, because of the solicitation that was provided by the Department of Natural Resources, I brought it back to the council. It was solely within your rights as the council to pursue these opportunities as you see fit, and you directed in November that you were comfortable with me discussing this with both the Department of Natural Resources and the Arts Center.
So are you saying what we did was we got comfortable with not following the regulations? I mean, I...
Oh, no, not at all. There are no regulations.
So we have no requirement to offer up something to everybody when we want to unload it in one way or another?
There is no requirement under the Evanston City Code. I think there's practice that the council has previously done, and again, that's the reason I came to you in November with this, so to get proper direction. This has all been noticed.
So that would apply to all city buildings?
I'm sorry?
That would apply to all city buildings if we were interested in...
You know, certainly it's up to the council to provide a format, however the council sees appropriate, as long as it's done publicly and noticed, and there's clear direction provided at notice meetings, which all occurred in the meetings leading up to this evening.
Have we done this before? I mean, without, I mean, without going out publicly for bids or proposals?
I don't know. We do sole source purchases...
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about, just wait, just wait. You know, the vacation of alleys requires the most extraordinary majority, the sale of property. We discuss renting property and selling property and things like that in executive session. I'm just curious, as this seems different.
Well, and I think that the council's direction after the discussions with the Tuwani Enterprises was that this all be before the community and discussed in open session, hence the reason for the discussions at Human Services in November, the council's action in November, the public meeting that was held in January, and then the additional discussion by Human Services in February. If I could remind the council that the council's original direction to me was on July 11, 2011. On July 11, 2011, the city council directed me to find other uses for the Harley-Clark Mansion that were not the Evanston Arts Center. So the beginning discussion started in July of 2011, when the direction was given to move forward with these various processes. We've had multiple meetings, multiple notices, so I think that we're moving forward.
I'm not trying to start a fight, I just was confused about the process.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
I just wanted to add, I think there is some merit, some merit, but I think there's some concern to what Alderman Rainey has suggested. It seems like we're preempting the process to some degree, and I just want to make sure we're doing this right. I have nothing to say in favor of or against the INDR, but it seems like it could be perceived as a done deal, or maybe even if it was done openly, but is this the right process, I guess, going forward?
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there are several different ways in which we find prospective tenants for city-owned property, and I'm thinking most recently of the Sexual Assault Counseling Center that is now going to be occupying space in the Civic Center. I don't think we issued an RFP to fill that space or moving the township here. There was no competition for the space that the township came to occupy. Properties that the city has owned on Howard Street, there was a different process that was used to fill the city-owned property on Howard Street. So there are lots of different ways. With the Harley-Clark Mansion in 2011, we wanted to undertake, the way I read it, is just a larger, cast a wider net to see who would be interested. So we issued the RFI and then the RFP to see if we could get interested bidders for the property. So I'm not sure that we have, Alderman Tindham, a particular process or procedure in place for how we fill vacancies in city-owned property. It depends upon the property, it seems.
City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just to sort of reiterate, I think in my past practice, working in cities, that you always go through an RFP process first, like we did with the Harley-Clark Mansion. And when you are unsuccessful with that process, I think then you tend to regroup, and I think that's why I've been very careful to bring these decision points back to you, because we had a failed process. So rather than restart a new process, when we had the interest again from the Arts Center, because they had told us really very early on back in 2011 that they did not believe that the Harley-Clark Mansion made sense for them, and so we were going down that separate path, going through the RFP process, there was no messages from them that they felt at that point that was inappropriate. So once that RFP process was unsuccessful, you know, I think good past practice is what we did here, and that is with every step of the way, have the council consider the step and then make the decision. So on November 11, 2011, the council directed me, after considering options, to move forward with the discussions with the Arts Center, who had then at that point expressed additional interest in staying at the property, as well as the unsolicited letter we received from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So again, I think what matters most is that it's disclosed, that it's in publicly announced agendas. We started, as I think you all know, a Harley-Clark electronic newsletter, so that every time this issue was brought before any elected body, that there was a note sent, and we sent a note for the meeting this evening. I think we've been as transparent as possible, and I feel very, the process has been very appropriate.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And I guess at this juncture, I'm still looking at the IDNR idea as an idea, because I don't see, in my mind, it's not a proposal. So what I wouldn't want to see happen is, for example, that not to pan out. The Arts Center is working on moving, have no Arts Center and have nothing in the building. That would be, that would be bad in my mind. So I do think it's important to proceed cautiously. I do agree that more time would be appropriate here. The Arts Center, I think everybody here recognizes that it provides something of value. The dollar a year lease, you know, they're not stealing from us or anything like that. That was arranged because they are providing something of value to the community, and I think we all understand and recognize that and appreciate that. So hopefully, in the course of this process, we can work collaboratively, both with helping them find their new location, but also with, you know, making appropriate arrangements to make that transition.
Thank you. It's my understa... Alderman Rainey.
Well, I mean, I've heard several commentaries now about extending the lease beyond the one year, and I'm thinking, since we have a motion on the floor for one year, is it time now to make a friendly amendment to that motion to extend it? It's on, I can't... Then it starts popping. What I'm saying is that there's a motion on the floor for one year. Several people have commented that there should be perhaps more time than one year, and is it time now for a friendly amendment or some condition applied to the one year in case there is not an ironclad agreement with evidence of funds for the restoration of this property, which I fear... I'm just thinking, should there be some kind of condition or extension? Amendment made right now.
Alderman Burrus.
I think it makes it harder to find a new tenant if we continue extending and we don't have a date certain. And we need to negotiate in good faith and be honest with people that we asked to do the RFPs or asked to come forward, which we clearly haven't done in the past on this subject because it becomes so emotional. And I guess my frustration in this with the Arts Council is they've had plenty of time. They've had at least five years since I've been on council. They've known that they were going to have to move and move, and definitely the last two and a half, we've been talking about an RFP process. We went through an RFP process. The lone person, entity standing on the RFP process offered to find a building for the Evanston Arts Council. They worked with Tuwani Enterprises to find a building. None of you came out then to support that enterprise who was trying to help you find a building and help you pay for a building. I saw none of you here in support of them. So to be really clear, they've known a really long time, and it's not until that RFP process ended, and they decided, oh, wow, we can't move, we don't have a benefactor to help us move now, now we want to stay. Then we're like, oh, no, we don't want to stay. It is going to cost more than we originally thought, as the Tuwani Enterprises examination explained to them that it was going to cost a whole lot of money. Now they got another evaluation, said it's going to cost a lot of money, and now they want to leave. How are we possibly going to find a new tenant when we are, they're going to stay, they're not going to stay, we're not going to make them leave? This will be going on for years. And then a year from now, if we did say, yes, you need to be out, you'll be back here again saying, oh, no, we can't find a place and we'll extend again. That's the part that I think is really frustrating from a business perspective. How can we possibly make any arrangements with any other organization to do something in this building? And there are still code violations, there are still safety issues, even, I think they offered $110,000 to bring up to minimum code. That's not a heck of a lot of money with all the problems in that building. So the notion that we haven't given them enough time, I think, is false, because we have. We've given a lot of time. They've known. The board knew. The new board has known. The executive director absolutely has known, because they've been, she's been in conversations with the city manager and Alderman for many years.
That segues nicely into Alderman Holmes has texted us and would like the safety issues discussed. City Manager, are you ready to address those?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Holmes. We have talked at some detail about the needs of the building. In your packet are several different reports. The first report that's in the packet is a new report that was prepared at the request of the Arts Center, listing a variety of life, safety, code, and accessibility improvements that deal with fire alarm systems, the sprinkler systems, various door issues, lighting, certainly the windows, the heating, air conditioning equipment that needs to be replaced, boiler, chiller, a whole variety of different things, and it starts on page 400 of your packet. The dollar amounts that were... The dollar amounts that were indicated, things that would be needed in the first year, and Alderman Holmes asked a follow-up question of the $110,000, and the number 111,500 is on page 407 of your packet, and that is the building code life, safety, and accessibility improvement. So really, for the building to be occupied safely today, there is a need for $111,500 worth of improvements. The report goes on, for additional costs, additional $430,000 for life, safety improvements, additional $1.1 million for building envelope, hard construction costs for a three-year renovation of $3.1 million, adding soft costs of project contingencies of $5.1 million costs. So clearly through that report, and the report that the City of Evanston did, which is further in your packet a while back, dealing with some of these issues, clearly states that there are issues today about the building that certainly have concerned your city staff since 2011, when we first brought this to you. So the $111,000, again, it comes from the report that the Art Center has done, it's comparable to the numbers that we did in our report, which is about a year, year and a half ago. But clearly, while I have the floor, this is not about the Art Center not being a tremendous asset for the community. The issue is the building, and that the building has not been kept up by the Art Center, it's not been kept up by the City of Evanston. Clearly, it is recognized as an asset for this community, and we're trying, I think all of us, to find ways to make sure that that asset remains for a long time.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Bobquitz. I can see that this, with the discussions with the IDNR, can proceed on a parallel track with the Evanston Art Center. We're looking at really giving them just a little less than a year through the end of January 2015. I'm wondering if our negotiations with the IDNR could include perhaps, assuming it advanced, some of these life, safety improvements to the building, especially if it looks as if they're heading out, if they're going to be the successive tenant there? Could this be part of our discussions with IDNR?
And Alderman Grover, members of the-
The kind of improvements that they might be undertaking anyway?
I'm certainly happy to raise with them. I think it is often difficult to ask a new tenant to provide improvements for a previous tenant in a space. Again, I think the Illinois Department of Natural Resources wants to be a good, good new addition to the community, and is not looking in any way, I think, to get in the middle of these discussions between the city and the Art Center. With that said, I think anything's possible, but again, also, every passing day, I think the deterioration of the building and the systems within the building continues.
So my other question is, I think Alderman Braithwaite moved the motion that came from the Human Services Committee. Can we consider, then, my suggestion of extending the lease term to January 31st, 2015, as a friendly amendment?
It's already been seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
It was moved a second. So we've got to deal with it.
Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can understand, because I've heard in emails and voicemails and phone calls, some frustration about the Art Center, and I think some of them are just somewhat angry, but I think we really have to examine, who are we frustrated with? Is it the Art Center, or is it with ourselves? We offered them, year after year, a dollar a year lease, you know, why wouldn't they take it? I mean, are we angry that they took it? They had, they had a good deal and they took it? We offered it. And as late as last November, we said, go ahead, plan your future at Harley Clark. It was very clear, it wasn't certain that they would get the opportunity, but we did say, go ahead. So we have had this mixed messages sent out there to them. And with regard to getting involved with the prior proposal, which really didn't come forward, as a lot of people thought it had, but, you know, that was, that was a very messy situation that I have no regrets, or I think it was a safe and probably very wise move that the EAC stayed out of that. There was nothing really to gain, from my perspective, getting involved in that, and I'm glad they stayed out. And that's it. I just think we have only, on this council, probably ourselves to blame, and if there's frustration, let's, you know, let's look at ourselves first, before we start, you know, pouncing on the EAC.
Alderman Burris, and then I would remind you, we have Alderman Grover's motion before us.
Sure.
For her amendment to the motion.
I have no issues with the dollar a year. That was the decision that a council many, many, many years ago made, and I think councils many years ago also made other financial decisions, similar to the water sales decision, which we've lived with, and it's a serious problem and financially harmful for us, and that we should not replicate. But at the same time, EAC was responsible for doing a better job of upkeep, and we did not hold them to that. They should have held themselves to that better upkeep, and they chose not to do that. So there is, there's a lot of blame to go around, but this council has an opportunity to make the right decision financially for the city and going forward. And that's, that's what I'm saying, is that we have been transparent. The Art Center has known that they needed to leave. They're, over and over again, we've talked about the issues with the building. This is no surprise to anyone about the issues with the building. But to move forward, we need to have the Art Center out of the building so we can find a viable tenant that will pay for the repairs. We can't. We financially can't do that. It would be irresponsible for us to do that. That's what I'm saying, is that from a business perspective, a financial perspective, we need to move on.
And thank you, Alderman Grover, for making your motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to have a friendly amendment that would increase the time. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. If I were to offer a friendlier amendment, is that possible? Alderman Rainey says yes. What do you say, Madam Mayor?
Don't we have to vote on the First Amendment?
Well, we have to vote on-
But I still would have an opportunity to amend the amended-
If, if Alderman Grover's motion fails, then you could add your friendlier amendment.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey.
No, no. A friendly amendment is an amendment that should be made prior to that vote with the approval or consent of the maker of the motion, that he wants to amend.
Do you want to ask for the consent? Who made the motion to begin with?
I made the motion.
Alderman Grover made the amendment.
The amendment was accepted by the maker of the motion, so it's part of the motion.
Am I asking?
No. Alderman, Alderman Braithwaite made a motion that is on our agenda.
Right.
Alderman Grover amended that motion to, to make it one year, which is longer than the 200 and whatever days.
Right.
Now Alderman Tendem would like to ask Alderman Grover, may he make a friendly amendment to her motion? Right?
I think it has, Peter, it has to be all right with Peter as well, does it?
This, this motion's on the floor, is it not?
The motion's coming from committee.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, the current motion on the floor is Alderman Grover's. It was duly seconded, that has to be voted upon first. However, Alderman Tendem can ask Alderman Grover to agree to rephrase her motion for a longer period of time. If she agrees, then, if it's seconded, the vote can occur. If she does not agree, then the current motion as amended for 12 months is on the floor and must be voted upon.
Thank you. Alderman Grover. My, my, my- Yes, please. Jane, oh, come on, Jane, you owe me one. My, my request would not be a, 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 a different amount of time specific, but a, some flexibility in that if, in fact, after that period that we are going to grant them, we would have some flexibility to extend that if there are no, if there's not a proposal that seems going forward, or if we can, you know, if we see that, we can easily do that, not to help them, you know, rush out, rush out of there and give them additional time to do so.
So your motion would be without us, some kind of agreement with a successor tenant, that we would build in some flexibility to this existing lease term with the Art Center?
Correct. I mean, it would give us the opportunity to tell that potential tenant that we have this, you know, we have this date of January 31st. However, if that tenant, if that does, if that isn't inappropriate, or even, you know, even of interest to somebody at that point, that we can give the Art Center more time to, to leave.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
We need a second.
Alderman Rainey, is there a second for the motion that would give them more time if there is no tenant? Is that, was that your motion, Alderman? If we do not have another tenant? And you're, you're happy with the safety concerns? You're not?
I'm not sure happy describes it, but I'm, to the extent that we've asked, I have asked on several occasions, the city manager to confirm that the fire department and others have, have given this its approval, yes.
Okay, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think, given Alderman Burris's concerns, this feeds right into it. I think there needs, there needs to be a date certain. That's, that's my feeling. It leaves it, it leaves it too open to any potential, and I'm, I'm expecting that there could be others in addition to IDNR, and just, it just makes it too uncertain.
Alder, I agree. Alderman Wilson.
And I'm going to support Alderman Grover's motion, but I'm just going to say that my expectation is, and this isn't built into the ordinance or built into the, into the notice, but my expectation is that if there is not a tenant, and hopefully this is everyone's expectation, that the communication will be ongoing and open with the Art Center. You know, if there's no tenant, I want to have updates and information and make sure that they are apprised of what's going on, if they need to do other things, if they need to, you know, make additional improvements, or whatever it is. That just needs to be ongoing. I don't want to just have a date and say, okay, you know, are you packed yet? I think that's everybody's expectation, and I don't, I don't think that's how the city manager's office would handle it. But I just want to make clear that what, that those are my expectations, that we are going to have good, solid, ongoing communication about what's happening.
Well, in addition, it's my expectation that if we vote on a date certain, that we, I would be happy to go with the Art Center Board to meet with IDNR to see if the Art Center needs more time. If IDNR is not going to be going into major rehab in the month of January, if there is a possibility that they could have more time, I would certainly be willing to entertain those discussions. Alderman Rainey.
Well, you mean IDNR or whatever the-
Or what, or-
Whatever the tenant happens to be.
Right.
That's one thing. Second thing is, I would like the amended, amended motion restated, so that I know what I'm voting on.
I would love to have it restated as well. Alderman Grover, it was your amendment that we're voting on, I believe.
I don't think I got a, I don't think Alderman Tendem got a second on it. So it reverts back to the-
So it's back to your motion.
Friendly amendment to Alderman Braithwaite's motion, which was-
Which was approval.
To direct the city manager to issue notice of the lease termination to the Evanston Art Center pursuant to the current lease agreement, but to extend that time until January 31st, 2015.
Perfect. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, to recommend that the city council direct the city manager to issue the notice of lease termination, and given the new date. So would all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That brings us to call of the wards. Alderman Wilson. Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Your report, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Yes, Alderman Holmes has asked me to remind you that the regular fifth ward meeting will indeed happen at the regular time and the regular place, which is the third Thursday, February 20th, at 7:00, at Fleetwood Jordane. But the irregular fifth ward meeting, which is a combined meeting with the seventh ward, will be happening a week later on Thursday, February 27th, at 7:00 PM, with a new location. There's been a location change from the McCormick Tribune Center to Lewis Hall, room 206, which is on the east side of Campus Drive, and much closer to the lakeside parking deck. And there will be signs to redirect. And while yarn bombs are typically anonymous guerrilla-type activities that bubble up from the knit and crochet subculture, we detonated one very public one at the library on Saturday, and thank you very much to all of the fiber artists, and you've got to believe you're all fiber artists now, who worked on the project. Special thanks to Jason Brown and David Geary from our Public Art Committee, who instaged and installed this project, the art. And thank you to Ann and Ann and Iceland and Jan and Jane and Joan and Virginia and Gretchen and Kim, Rachel, Sarah, Sari, Julie, Lily, Jill, and many, many others, including Jennifer Lastic, our, our arts coordinator, who put this whole thing together and produced all the materials for it. So be sure to take a look, it's at the trees that are outside our downtown public library. And thank you to Karen Danzig-Lions for letting us bomb the library.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I, I just can't follow that, but I do have a few things to say. First of all, tomorrow evening is the Howard Business Association meeting. We hope everyone shows up for that. And second of all, just a personal comment on emails that are going around regarding the placement of cameras, the mayor's special project on cameras on Safe Roots to School. There's an email trail going around that says, "The cameras on Howard Street and in the south end of town have been of no help." The person who's leading that charge has absolutely no connection to the south end of town, has no idea what those cameras have done, or what accomplishments they've achieved. I can assure you that the cameras on Brummel and Elmwood have been life-changing for that community. The cameras on Howard Street, both the Chicago side and the Evanston side, have been supported 100% by the community, and are very helpful in many, many ways, many ways. And so I would appreciate a take back or an apology for that group of people who are accusing the cameras of being unreliable and really inadequate in all sorts of ways. Then I need to say that while I do not support cameras from Oakton to Howard Street, I do support the mayor in her efforts to make these routes to school very safe. And I do appreciate the members of the Administration and Public Works Committee agreeing that when the grant is applied for and the grant is received, that Aldermen play a major role in identifying where cameras should be and should not be. And Madam Mayor, as of this date, and you recall when you were an Alderman, there has never been a camera placed in a ward that an Alderman didn't want it placed. And that's all I'm asking for the, to acknowledge the privilege of the Aldermen of the ward to have or not have cameras where some, the chief or whoever wants to place them. That's all I'm asking. So thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Thank you. This Wednesday, Alderman Rainey and I are holding a joint ward meeting at the Levy Center at 7:00 PM. We have a many, many agenda items, but one of the most exciting is the owners of the Little Bean Cafe that are interested in occupying the former Osco site at Oakton and Asbury will be giving a presentation on their business concept. So please come out to the ward meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Streets and Sanitation Department for all of their work in cleaning, clearing the streets. It's been just an incredible winter, and I appreciate very much the help that they've given individual homeowners to get either the entrances to alleys or getting the fire hydrants uncovered, especially at intersections. So thanks a lot. And upcoming ward meeting Tuesday, March 4th, 7 to 9, at the Public Library. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to announce that this Thursday at the District 65, or those that you know it, as the Joseph Hill Education Center, that I plan to host my second- plan to host my second ward meeting, starting at 7:00 PM. We'll have Officer Napier giving our second ward safety report. We'll have representatives from the Public Works Department having a discussion, giving an update on the snow removal. In addition to that, an update on the 2014 street resurfacing projects for the ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, I'd like to remind third warders that this coming Wednesday evening at the Plant Commission, the proposed building at the corner of Main and Chicago will be coming up on the agenda. And I also want to wish Alderman Holmes a fast recovery.
Thank you. That concludes call of the wards.
No, no, it's a good session.
What?
No, it's a good session.
No, okay. That's what I thought. I thought--
Nope. Move to adjourn.
We're pulling a last-minute one. Move to adjourn quickly before the city manager does something. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.